I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll open the meeting up to public comment. Okay, we'll go right into our special presentation this evening. Okay, budget presentation, Louise.
Yes, so I'm gonna pass out my slides and then you don't have to save these, we'll put these up on the website. I'm sorry. So we can start with our mission statement.
Alright, so again, we just wanted to, you know, we don't need to remind everyone. It's about the students, so that's why we're all here. It is about students, about education for students, it's about, you know, their future.
So the goals of our eighteen nineteen budget development is to maintain current level of program in services. We do have a one known retirement of social worker, so the current budget reflects the change from a more senior employee to hopefully someone who's a little bit less expensive. Does it count for double benefit plan for both individuals? We do have anticipated new debt for our twenty fourteen referendum. And as I've indicated, that debt has not been finalized. We are planning to go through the dormitory authority and it's anticipated that the state of New York will be finalizing that debt, not just on behalf of Highland, but on many of other school districts and municipalities. So I don't, I don't know if everyone understands that, but that's a pooling of debt and allegedly we get a better interest rate because it's a significant amount of money. Upon the time that those closing documents are signed, we'll know precisely what interest rates are and what the long-term debt schedule looks like. Likely that'll be the end of June. One of the things that's driving the eighteen nineteen budget is prior voter approved projects. Obviously, the twenty fourteen referendum, seventeen and a half million dollars and prior school bus proposition. All of those receive prior voter authorization, but then the dollars are hitting this budget. Of course, also the associated transportation aid and building aid should hit this budget as well, so long as those final cost reports that we've spoken about are completed. So a couple of the other drivers. ERS pension rates currently for the seventeen eighteen school year are fifteen point three is the blended rate. That rate is dropping a little bit. The TRS rate, nine point eight percent, is going up a little bit. So they really kind of are equalizing themselves a little bit. Health insurance continues to rise. As I've said in the past, we have four plans in the district. So the blended rate, again, these are estimates we use because many of the rates, we don't know the actual rate increase. For example, the niche plan, we don't know the rate increase. But so we're estimating an overall increase to health insurance of seven percent. Now, under the principle of interest due to the increasing debt, you can see I have a range there. We anticipate the full amount of debt that we're gonna pay in the eighteen nineteen budget will be about a million and a half. But we do have some funds that we set aside in debt service over, probably over the last project, this was before I got here. And we may be able to consider offsetting that million and a half and we may just be able to budget seven hundred thousand and use the debt service money to pay the remaining debt. Of course, we'll need to know what those actual figures are once we do that. The bus bands from the fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen years, we know what those payments are, those funds have been borrowed. That should be about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So currently, the draft proposed budget is at forty-five million dollars, four thousand one hundred and fifty-two, as compared to the current year budget. So budget to budget increase for this draft is a four point nine nine percent increase. Now for the, and I think I've mentioned this in the past, but the law requires certain things to be published when you're presenting a budget. And I always find it interesting that up until the tax cap legislation came in, all the school districts were required to report was the budget to budget increase as compared to the initial prior year's budget. So that would be the four point nine nine percent and the two numbers, the forty-five million as compared to the forty-two point eight million. When the tax cap legislation came into effect, then we started talking about what kind of revenue would it require in the local share to have a balanced budget in addition to state aid and other forms of revenue. So for a four point nine nine percent budget, if we leave the debt structured as we had planned in the draft, that will require a four point four five percent levy. And that is the levy which is right at the limit. It's not piercing the limit. Requires just a simple majority, fifty percent or fifty-one percent of the voters. Now, in our draft proposal, we've talked about the New York State budget estimate. As you all know, if you've got a television or looking at your smartphones, we had an approved budget this past weekend and the state of New York has adopted a budget. It is a little bit more than what we had anticipated. It looks like it may be a quarter of a million dollars to two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars more. And we're analyzing how the district will use that, what initiatives will, you know, will be funded. We're questing those out. We're also looking at if there are any potential other retirements, so we can get the most in our budget for the eighteen nineteen year.
And we had talked about some of the initiatives.
Yeah.
So again, so it's not just that we're looking at, you know, no change in program. So some of the things that we prioritize would be possibly a half reading teacher for the high school. That is something that is needed. Possibly also a trainer for the district that would be able to learn games, you know, in today's day and age, just with sports injuries and our very litigious society, you know, it is wise to have a trainer. And also, I had mentioned, I know at least to the board, I believe publicly, you know, I'd be very interested in possibly increased security of buildings, so that an additional security person each building, so that, and then stagger their time so that the buildings would be covered into the night hours. So those are some things that we're still in the consideration.
And, you know, we talk about this frequently, but I don't think you can ever mention this too much. When we start the budget development plan, it's a full eighteen months away from the completion of that spending plan. So a lot of what we're talking about here is what we anticipate and, you know, there are so many changes, which is why you see budget transfers before you on a fairly regular basis. So it's really a motion, you know, it's a target in motion and it will continue to be, but we'll continue to keep you informed. So I think the really important piece is, at this point, the draft budget is four point nine nine percent. That number could be reduced if we decide to use some of the debt service funds to offset some of that debt. Or it could be increased if we go ahead and we apply that additional state aid. So these are all factors that we're considering as we weigh and we'll be finalizing those before the next board meeting because we do have to adopt a budget in the next board meeting. So as I said, this is a four point four five percent tax increase and it is a simple majority with a fifty percent that requires for this budget to pass. Any questions?
Two quick ones, I think, Louise. The first one is, so we're part of a consortium and we pooled to get the lower rate on the borrowed money for capital projects. And do they ever let you know, obviously you know the rate that you get, but do they ever let you know that the rate that you would have gotten, had you not been part of the consortium?
No, and the reason for that is because they would actually have to do a public bid opening and they would actually have to hold a bid and there's no intention to award it. So, and the other piece of that, by the way, it's relevant. This is, by the way, the first time in my career that I'm actually going through the dormitory authority to borrow money. But so one of the really valuable pieces of that is if we get a borrowing rate, we all know interest rates are going up. If we get a borrowing rate of three and a half percent over the fifteen year life of the mortgage, mortgage, I'm sorry, over the debt, we'll be aided at that rate. If we go out and do just our own opening and let's say we get three or four, we'll be rated at whatever the assumed statewide amortization was set at when we did the borrowing.
Okay, great. That's another nice feature.
Yeah, and I don't want to minimize this. The dormitory authority, I have been, you know, sending so much literature, audited financial statements and drafting up like a management discussion and analysis because they want to make sure that we're a solid investment and that, you know, we're clearly not beyond our debt ceiling. So there's a lot of work involved and I'm really minimizing it, but that is the reason.
You have to be qualified almost to be part of that consortium. Oh, that makes sense. Okay. Second question I had was of the four point nine nine increase, we know that a good part of that is voter approved.
Correct.
It was, so we have got a capital project, we're purchasing some transportation, and I just want to be clear that both of those generate quite a bit of aid in years moving forward.
Yes. So, and by the way, just for the record, both of them generate almost seventy percent aid.
I was gonna say, actually, I was gonna throw up. Could I say that it actually generates fifty percent more or fifty percent or more aid in years to come?
Both transportation aid and building aid. But so what's strange is, you know, if we were paying for this out of our pocket, we would just pay the net. But because of the way we're required to budget, we have to raise both the revenue side and the expenditure side. And that's why we focus so much on what's driving this budget. You know, obviously, you know, the revenue side is increasing as well. We've also talked about the fact that I've been very conservative in what I've budgeted as some of the building aid because it's contingent, the timeline is contingent upon when those projects are complete. And we know some of that work is going through the summer. So I'll always be presenting you with a conservative estimate so that you have more money versus less. But so, you know, it's a shame because it's not newspaper friendly to be talking about numbers that are a little bit higher. But in the end, you know, it will aim in future years. Yes.
A lot of that was anticipated.
Worst case scenario.
Thank you.
Anything else?
So at our next board meeting, when we have to adopt. Alright, so we'll be able to get any questions till then. Just go get ahold of Louise, ask her some questions so we can finalize the budget presentation and have a vote. We'll call it on the April.
Seventeen.
Seventeenth. Alright, again, budget vote is May fifteenth. Okay, under. Curriculum instruction, we have a directive report. Do you want to have any questions, comments regarding directive report?
Just a comment, congratulations to Frank and those teams that did very, very well over the winter. I appreciate the report and a lot of teams showed some improvement there. Girls rock solid too, they did great. So congrats, Frank.
Frank, I also like this memo in regard to the, all the different groups and what the breakdown of the stipends and the uniform cost. That's very good information.
In regards to that, are you referring to the new sports offerings? We have full model.
Right. So those are things we don't currently.
Yeah, we don't currently have those.
Oh, alright. Okay. Well, I, this is great. I've never seen it presented like this before.
She knows the research has been done.
Yes. What is that? It's true. That is, that is in some of the initiatives that we are considering for using.
So on there, they have gymnastics. We had gymnastics this year, right, but it was combined with the four other schools.
We had, we had two students that participated in gymnastics that were shadowing other districts. If we were to have, there was interest from other girls to have it. Now, if we were to do that, it would be a coaching bar and then there'll also be a fee for rental and things like that.
So basically, this is what the cost would be if we went.
If we were, yes.
My concern was this was the cost for what we, that shadow in, that was my concern.
No, that's to have a program, Highland, have a program.
Question for you, Frank, on the spring sports. I know it's mid-season, I guess we can say not really yet because we've gotten outside.
Time watch, winter for a month, but game.
Would you be able to maybe, next meeting, give us an update just on the teams and the sizes and.
You're looking for a side, okay, side.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep, involvement. Thank you.
Frank, just real quick, going back to the proposed new sports offerings. Do all the, the three fall and the three for the two spring, is there a lot of interest right now currently shown for those programs or also?
Indeed, modified cross-country has always been interest for that, even before I was here. So, and that to me is the one that's gonna cost us the least. Indoor track, there was interest, as you remember, before the season, and then we did do a a survey of who would be interested and, you know, it was in the high twenties to low thirties that would be interested. Because we knew would sign up, but they were interested. So I would think if we were to approve it as a sport, then we'd just go bat it and sign up students the same way we do with other sports.
For the fall program, which would be the cross-country, the varsity gymnastics and the indoor track.
Indoor track would be winter and gymnastics would be winter.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, the only one fall would be.
You're right, the only one fall would be modified. When do you really, when would you need to have a decision for that in order to implement?
Indoor track and gymnastics on varsity level?
Modified cross-country.
Modified cross-country would be the easiest one. Because all the other schools have modified, so it's already built into the schedule. A modified schedule shadows the varsity schedule. So that's, that one there is really, to me, is kind of like a no-brainer.
You could implement quickly.
Yeah, and it's not gonna affect the transportation, it's not gonna affect other parts of our budget.
You know, I mean, I look at something like that, it's going to, it's gonna grab quite a few of those seventh and eighth graders that are not participating in soccer in the fall and give them some other avenue to get out and spend some time, you know, getting, keeping in shape and, you know, not walking the streets to town or whatever else.
It's another opportunity for kids.
Not opportunities there. And for twenty-five hundred dollars, that's, you know, that's something we have to consider to have Frank move forward at some point in time. I'm not saying we do that tonight, but let's keep that on the back burner.
So we have to approve this?
We would have to approve.
Oh, okay.
Not tonight, no. Not tonight.
Frank just gave you.
That's the data.
So it's really not, it's not really yet. Okay.
Not a program we currently have, but it's something that everyone might want to entertain.
And some of these are a result of parents who have approached us and, I think, at least two of them. While we're on curriculum instruction, and I know you mentioned the possibility of additional items, where do we stand on computer sciences and the instruction of computer sciences? Have we any vision? I mean, I only ask this because I recently read an article about, you know, there's increasingly about the opportunity for STEM in the job field. And others, STEM, more than half of them deal with computer sciences. And I know we're addressing very vigilantly technology, we're wonderful about technology. But to me, the next step is of course, given that majority of the job opportunities involve computer sciences, I'm wondering, do we have any program division towards creating computer science as a, as a classroom activity or?
I'm sure we have the vision, but there's no immediate plan.
I thought it would be a budget initiative, it would need to be a budget initiative because we don't currently have a lot of extra room teacher-wise to, or knowledge in our current teachers.
On the outside, because in the sense that, well, I think all of these things are wonderful and they're pleasant, and of course, that's the problem, you know, it's always true.
It is, always.
But to me, it's just growing, I think there's an increasing importance in this and I think it's something we have to stop, you know, pushing. Again, technology-wise, I think we're definitely on board. Computer science-wise, I think we're incredibly lacking. And I think it's something that really, the computer science offerings aren't as, they're not even what were being offered in the eighties, nineteen.
No, we have none.
Yeah, I mean, I think the last time we had a well-rounded discussion on that was, we've got some STEM activities across the K-12. We've definitely got technology across the K-12. But courses or high school electives was something they were gonna look at, A, in the current model, see what they can do, and then beyond this year, talk about what is needed to put those in. But this might be the third year we've had that conversation.
Exactly. And knowing we're under budget constraints, I'm asking if perhaps whether it involves putting together a group to think creatively, but perhaps within the constraints of the current faculty, we can find ways to find members that are educated, are talented enough or with a little bit of assistance can create, you know, these as electives that they might be able to.
It is conversation that we're having and we do have, we do have some programming happening in some of our physics and math classes. But it certainly is not a, it's not a dedicated computer science program.
It's not formal.
It's not at all. You know, they are doing a program, they're working with it, but it's, you know, it's part of the physics class, which doesn't, it isn't really physics. So, you know, I think that we probably have a couple of teachers that might be interested, but as soon as we have a couple of teachers interested in that, again, it's that conversation about they teach some other pretty popular courses. So if we take them off of those, you know, it's looking at how we shuffle and how we juggle people and times. But I know that Mr. Zimmer is very interested in adding more opportunities, whether it's a half-year or four-year courses. And I do believe that that's part of his look at the schedule.
I mean, right now, if I'm having comp sci, isn't there, they go to BOSI's? Is there a BOSI's offering for that or not necessarily?
There would be, there's probably two or three different BOSI's programs that are computer science programs.
Yeah, but you'd have, it's not, it's different.
We're not doing anything, you know, just even using my daughters as an example in the neighboring district. They both taught, took computer science one first semester and I, and one of them is in computer science two second semester. She could then go on to AP computer science, you know, I mean, they have a program.
It's C-word.
They do C-word.
I had to pay eight thousand dollars out of pocket to have my son go into a Java.
We don't have that. It should be part of the budget conversation. And also, you know, we've talked for quite a while about doing a retreat with the board of really focused on technology and the direction that we want to go. So that's, I think, a better, or not a better place, but a place to have that conversation when we can have the administrators here too. Because I'm, I think there's some programming that's happening at the middle school and the technology classes there too. But of course, in that level, it's much more introductory because most students are getting, you know, they're cycling through the technology program.
Yeah, I don't, and again, I'm not trying to beat the same drum again and again, but for me, it's becoming more of a presidio issue because it's more and more apparent in the job predictives that the jobs that are hirable, the jobs that are needed, the ones that are gonna be the most well-paid are in the computer sciences and programming. And knowing that, how can we not be preparing our students by that?
I'm with you because I'm still thinking, many of the board members will remember this. I think we had a former salutator and a valedictorian who was going on and that, the parent spoke to us and that was a year or two ago about great program, but in talking with these other families that are going to Brown University, the exposure of their kids on the STEM-related continuum was higher and that was an area that he challenged us to bolster. It's proved elusive to this point.
Fifty percent of the STEM jobs, and again, I applaud the extensive work at STEM, K-12. It's so wonderful. The technology itself has been wonderful. But I think we need to find an aggressive way to push to the next level so we're ready to prepare. And if we have to do it within the constraints of the current faculty, I mean, we just have to, I'm not being biased anymore, but it's something I think we really need to seriously approach.
Right, maybe you gotta look at certification areas too.
And that's difficult.
Anyone else on the directive report? Just got one on. Oh, and I see with Mr. Miller's report that we're still addressing phase one A punch list items. And I know at the last meeting, we had some conversation to see where we are and how we're gonna be able to close this out. And I guess.
So we can, that might be part of Ms. Lynch's report if you want to go further now. We did have a, you know, we have a standing meeting now every week, so we had our first one Tuesday and we talked about all the punch lists and where we are. So we can give the board updates.
Yeah. So we met on Tuesday and we had, the CM was present along with Mr. Miller, Superintendent Bongovi and myself. And the architect phoned in and we had, I mean, it was a good solid hour and fifteen minute meeting about where we're at. They're focusing on some of the documents, so I'll say it seemed like they weren't, the CM and the architect didn't both agree on where they were. But we did a lot of wrap-up and documenting so that we can ensure that emails and things were moved along. So where we left it out is there's only one contract that was not closed out. And they're having a project meeting tomorrow and they needed to get some answers from, I guess there was some confusion as to whether it was the prime, the GC or the site contractors issue. So there was some discussion and we should have some resolve on that tomorrow. And we are on schedule to close it out during the month of April. Things are, there is forward motion, I'll just say that. It's not finalized yet, but we are on track.
It's amazing what happens when you get old and people, the room is.
Isn't that interesting? No one can point fingers. They tried to though.
Don't let them.
We still tried.
But hopefully, from what I read, tomorrow's meeting will be, who's to assign the responsibility for the remaining punch list item?
Right, and there are, I want to say two or three items over at the middle school. You know, little things that are, they're still tightening up, but the resolution is close.
Home and careers, it was still not on final.
Well, there was a proclamation made during that meeting that it had been transferred over. And there was some discussion as to, you know, really was it, was it ready? But again, that's also very close. I think we're waiting for a gas shut-off valve, check daughter and.
Very close to this way we are, gas shut-off valve.
Alright, anyone else have anything? We'll move on to our personnel. We have quite a few items in the personnel up to F, A to F. Would you like to take those as a block? And then we can recognize some new hires and.
Are you saying that would include F?
That would include F unless you want to hold F separately.
Me too, whatever the reason deserves that much attention.
So we'll do A through E as a block and we'll recognize some of our new hires. Alright, can I have a motion to take personnel as a block from A through E? Motion by Ed, second by Evan. Discussion. All in favor?
Sorry, may I ask one question? There was on the, for, yeah, the appointment for the high school musical. There's no stipend for that?
Are they sharing the stipend three ways?
Can you tell me what position I was?
High school musical accounts on the third page at the top.
So a bunch of.
Was that, was that vacant announced?
My understanding is there's only musical three ways, there's a director. My understanding is there's only musical three ways, there's a director.
They are three ways, do you remember what that was please?
No, I don't, but I can verify that, it's. I don't wanna say if I'm not positive, so can I?
Okay.
So is this, this is the person that's getting the extracurricular appointment, but there's other?
Right, apparently so.
We already appointed two, we appointed.
I already appointed two, yeah, two, I, I'm not sure.
And I think he's handing the instrumental and orchestration.
Is that the club music coordinator?
No, this is the the musical production, they're doing a twenty-fifth annual Putnam County spelling contest, it's currently in production right now.
Musical musical account. Yes.
Right, I.
Yes, it is.
Is that the account, is that maybe a misspelling or that's what it is on the contract?
Music director.
That's.
The con, the contract just says musical director and play director for the musical. So I know that we have appointed the musical music director and we've appointed the musical play director. I'm wondering, did they create an account? Is it maybe not an extracurricular appointment?
Yeah, that came, it came from the principal. Typically, there's a stipend or it's under the H TA contract.
Is this a company account?
I think this might be to create an account.
To create an account?
It wouldn't be under personnel.
There's no stipend, it's a tab.
Oh, that's true, shouldn't be under personnel.
Right, right.
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 Do they, you don't know if they currently have an extracurricular account?
I, I'm looking at the clubs and I don't see anything with that title. I see music coordinator.
Can I, may I suggest that you table it in our list?
Yeah, we can table it because.
And I can just verify the information?
I think they're, only my vague now is talking to the director, I think they currently have much fun functioning as an account and they're trying to.
They're trying to create an account.
That would be my, that's not a law that.
So he's probably gonna be responsible for that account.
Yeah, but it's still speculation until we know.
Right, and I can't, I can't answer that.
Well, he's gonna be taking that money, because I think that's a question anyways.
So we're gonna, we're gonna pull, pull C from the personnel.
Yep, yep. Yep. And then we'll take that as a table and I will.
Any other discussion? I don't know, we're hiring quite a few people here and I don't see anybody in attendance.
Yeah, so. Yeah, I was gonna recognize me.
First call of points, look at that.
That's one, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for coming. And he's been here since six thirty.
This is Mr. McCray?
Oh, sorry.
This is Alan, Alan McCracken?
Yeah.
I see Alan all the time.
McCray Allen. McCray Allen.
Alan McCray Allen?
No, it's McCray Allen.
Any other, any other questions that we can think of, vote? We're good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry.
So Mr. President, I did wanna recognize McCray, so I've kind of known McCray quite well. I was very impressed right from the beginning because McCray is actually a food service worker for Mr. Party. And there were many times where we had a shortage of custodians at night, so he would work his whole day shift and then be working at night in the custodial capacity. So he's a hard worker, he's got a great work ethic. I know that John, custodian here at night, has had great praise for McCray and his work ethic. And I've seen his work ethic, so I applaud him for that and I do welcome him through that. Though I know we're gonna miss him in the food service. Maybe he can work food during the day.
Thank you for finding us.
But thank you very much.
Thank you for waiting.
Okay, so now we have our. It's.
Go get some rest now. Thanks for coming.
Something that I know it's somewhat disappointing for the entire board. Louise, I know you've been here almost six years.
Yes.
Six years and Louise came on board when a lot of, a lot of naysayers in the audience and in the community saying that we weren't going to survive, we were going to go belly up as a district because of the economical downturn. A lot of doom and gloom. Louise was able to put us in a direction where we are now. And I think with us being able to establish a capital reserve fund under Louise, which is beneficial to the district. We've generated fund balance now that's positive. We've had some ups and downs, but I mean, that goes along with the nature of the business. But I think all in all, Louise has done an excellent job with our financial situation here in the district. Brought us from a situation where we were all worried, you know, how we were gonna make ends meet and who was gonna be next on the chopping block to where we are now in this budget cycle. We haven't even speak about filling that gap and making some adjustments. So Louise, I think it's with deep regrets that we see you leave. And I hope in your new position that you're going to flourish there and do as well as you've done here, so.
Thank you.
We'll go forward with the resignation and if anyone else has anything they'd like to comment on regarding Louise, can I do so? So, under personnel F resignation be resolved, the Board of Education upon the recommendation of superintendent accepts with regrets the resignation from the following employee. Louise M. Lynch, Business Administrator, effective date, May twenty-four, two thousand and eighteen, for purpose of resignation. Can I have a motion please?
Motion.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Debbie. Discussion?
I'd just like to reiterate, for the baron, to say that I certainly wish Louise the very best, she's really sorely missed. She's certainly, I've been on board for seven months now and, you know, I can say about both Mrs. Dudley Lemic and Ms. Lynch, I mean, we clicked right away as a team and worked very well together. But this is part of the business we're in, so I certainly wish her well.
Thank you.
And we're gonna miss her, but as I said, you know, we're still, I'll still call her up every once in a while just to harass her.
You should, yeah.
Do that.
Thank you.
Right, she was, she was able to deliver bad news with a, with a smile and really stabilize her in school, so thank you for.
Yeah, you did, thank you. Thank you for your.
Thank you for your service, Louise.
Thank you.
We still have before one.
You do.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Okay. Dean, you're next.
Howdy. Um, some updates, a reminder that's one language night is tomorrow at High School Cafeteria from six ninety P M. We're gonna do a fashion show, do some Spanish skits, do some header tattoos, do Indian dancing, do a ping pong tournament, and also delicious cultural cuisine. So I, we invite you all to attend and hope to see you there. A reminder that the National Society of Doctor's Ceremony is this upcoming Tuesday, April tenth, at six thirty. And again, we would, we invite you all to attend. Student Council this month is going to be, have a fundraiser for pennies for patients. This Saturday, the Intera Club is attending the District Governor Assembly to honor Chris Jean Grasso on being the new District Governor of Rhodey for our area. So I'm, I'm going and I'm excited to be part of that conversation, see what Rhodey is going to be doing in our area. I think heavily focused, Chris is definitely focusing on the opioid crisis and I applaud her for that. Marv Nguyen's head month conference is less than two weeks away, so now it's buckling down and getting all the last minute materials, everything organized. So I'm very excited to be there participating. Mock Trial had the run, is over and they had a great run this past year. The prom is less than a month away, April twentieth, from seven to eleven at the Billard Daisy in Mothra Falls with the theme of a crystal gala. On that note, the P T S A had a meeting this evening and we discussed finalizing after prom party, which is held at the Wood each year. So it's, I'd like to thank the P T S A for always putting that on each year. It's a really nice for them to do that and they have food and it's just a photo booth. So I'm really appreciative that they put that on for students to do something after the prom. Some sports updates, the baseball trip to Maryland was sadly canceled due to some snow. The girls lacrosse team won the first game against F D R. And the baseball team won two scrimmages in a doubleheader. I found out what a doubleheader means today. It means two arrows, they say two things. So, so congratulations to those sports teams. And in the last piece, it's, Mr. Mizel stole my point, but I wanted to actually talk about the computer science as we are talking about budgeting and technology course. I know Ms. Evelyn and we talked about the physics classes and I know I was there at that meeting last year when they did a presentation, Mr. Kaz's, Mr. Kaz did a presentation last year. And we had talked about increasing technology in our school and discussing in class. And my previous successor, Katie, talked about that too. And I just wanna reiterate that point, I think it's, I've done and I've looked at Marlboro and I've looked at New Paltz and actually this evening I went and I printed out what electives or courses they offer at those two schools. And they both have a computer science or a technology course and they have a track for them to do. And I think if anything, we're lacking in that extremely, I think it's sort of something that we need to work on now and not wait on because it's not even just about if you wanna be in that field, if you wanna be in the STEM field. It's about if you wanna be in business and you don't know how to use Excel or Microsoft Word or PowerPoint. All those, even those simple, very useful pieces of technology at a computer, that doesn't just pertain to someone who wants to do STEM or someone who just wants to do computer science. That pertains to a lot of students in all different fields. Now, everyone is expected to be able to, you know, use a computer at a well-adapted ability. So, you know, even for me, it's like I just learned that you could do Ctrl C and Ctrl V to copy and paste things. Like it's those kind of things that I would hope that this technology course would be able to offer our students. And I think, you know, the other two schools, not in comparison, but they're offering engineering electives, they're offering electives in fashion design, they're offering these other really cool opportunities. And that's another discussion, but I really think if we're gonna start at the basics, if we're, you know, we're lacking in one area, we have no technology in high school. You know, we're doing that in middle school, at seventh grade, you know, it's just, it's what we need to offer our students to ensure that they have a right and successful future.
So tell Paul about it, let's do something.
Is it?
No, you're right.
Interesting.
You're right.
Well, I'm not gonna answer that.
No, thank you, Dean.
No, thank you, Dean.
Any questions for Dean?
Dean, I just have a quick question, the after prom party, do they get a good response?
Um, I think so, it's not like everyone at the prom goes, but I think there's probably at least fifty, maybe to seventy-five or more.
That's good.
Um, I think, yeah, I mean, they give out free gift cards, so that's why I go. But, um, so they, I mean, have food and, you know.
What time is it?
It's, I think it starts at.
It's still, it's gonna start.
Um, I think it actually speeds in at like ten, even though the prom goes to eleven, they begin at ten.
Oh, okay, yes, we can see.
And students that don't attend the prom are still able to attend after prom party. So even if you weren't able to go to the prom of, you know, affordability or whatever it may be or timing, you'd still attend that.
But they still do it, that's very nice.
That's great. And they have, um, a nice, and also you're probably against saying you don't really, I mean, I don't usually have a lot of time to eat, so it's nice that they have food and, um, this will be my fourth prom, so.
And it wasn't like one, two o'clock in the morning, something like that?
I think it ends at like one A M.
One A M. Very fast.
But I'm not.
One, I'll try.
I think one, yes.
Well, thank you. I'll be there.
Okay.
Thank you, Dean, and some of your points are well taken. I think we as a board have to.
Get busy.
Take and listen and try to move us in the right direction for our technology piece. You know, I've been saying it for a good bunch of years, we gotta try to expand our, our offerings at the high school and be creative. I mean, I know years past, it's always been, you know, the resources weren't there. But I think we can do, that old saying, I don't know if I keep using it, do more with less. But if we can become somewhat creative and offer a little bit more at times for our students, I think it's beneficial. And again, going back to that college and career regimen, that's a big piece of me that. I, I think that entails a lot more than just, you know, folks who can push kids through to attend a four-year or two-year further education. I think it's expanding and going in all directions so we can hit every student.
And if I may add, I, you know, also I think there's ways to look and try to think we could do like other middle school has, you know, an elective for each quarter or maybe two quarters and it's, maybe that's, then there's computer science and there's maybe it's a two-part and maybe take a one-year or every other day and it's with health. I'm, you know, just thinking, you know.
So, would you happen to have, I don't know if you like counted them, but is, do you know the Highland electives versus the Marlboro one?
Yeah, I actually have, I printed it out.
But do you have those numbers? Like I don't need to count right now, but is it like Highlands got thirteen electives, Marlboro's got fourteen and seventeen? Or you don't know that?
I don't know the exact numbers, but what I would say is they definitely have more specific electives, I think. Like a product design course, I think would be interesting in the technology department too. Like, they definitely have more electives per se.
Yeah, I would say more electives in many different areas, so like.
In many different areas, like even.
So each content area has several.
Yeah, like New, and right, because like they have not just computer science one, they have computer science two, they have college computer science. And then New Paltz even has a whole engineering on track program to that, you know, and Marlboro does too. So that a lot of students nowadays think engineering, but if you take that course, you might realize that maybe engineering is not for me. So I think.
Those are courses also offer college credits.
They do, yes.
My daughter has three college credits as a freshman in engineering.
And, and I know, you know, we, we focus on, on the, on the higher education. I know from my own experience, even though a lot of students gain college credits during high school and once you get into a higher level of education, just let me know how many of those college credits do they accept? Very, very few, unless you're going to the SUNY schools and then they accept quite a few of them. So, I mean, we kind of.
You got a choice on how to structure them, but.
Right.
They're not even asking for high level stuff. A computer applications class, teach Microsoft Word, Excel, you know, like it is assumed, I agree with you. It is assumed that you can use Microsoft Office. And the Ctrl C and Ctrl X, I mean, you know.
And as an elective, that wouldn't require.
In contrast, I, you know, you learn that, that's, that's a middle school skill, it's not high skill.
So on the I'm hoping.
So there's a different sequence, they're not all up here. You do have stuff for all students that could participate in the sequence, but do we offer?
Oh, okay, that's, that's a whole different. But, you know, I'm, I'm hoping, you know, Mr. Zimmer and Mr. Judge can kind of collaborate a little bit. And I, you know, I don't know what the, why we weren't moving in that direction all the years, what was holding us back to explore and expand the offerings to, you know, make sure that we hit every, every level of.
Well, they did, I mean, we worked on sixth period language and I think the majority of people are, there's a lot of people teaching sixth periods, is my understanding, I'll leave it at that. So the capacity to recreate and renew is kinda up here. I, I agree with Sarah saying, you know, you want more, give me people.
I, I, yeah, the resources have to be there.
I'm gonna have to look for an alliance.
But I know that Mr. Bon Jovi wanted to work on this with Mr. Zimmer. We've got a, we've got a few, you know, let this incubate a little bit. We're, we're hearing it loud and clear.
We are hearing it loud and clear.
I think with the board seat, I think that's one of the most frustrating, is there is all this great stuff, but we have to balance it out with affordability, it's just a difficult part of the, the job. I want it all, I want it all for these kids.
I don't, to your point about SUNY, have we explored, I mean, I know at one point we were aligned with Marist with certain course offerings and by the time we were aligned with community colleges, perhaps there's a venue you could look for some kind of, if, if they can't supply the courses, maybe they can supply some financial, you know, alleviation and.
Assistance.
No, I know, I get what you're saying, I mean, a bunch of years ago, we were aligned with Marist and I don't, you know, that just kinda fell off the table a little bit. I'm not sure if they're still offering that type of support. And I'm not sure if they're still offering that type of support. Anyway, all right, so I agree, Mike, we've heard it last clear and I think the administration has heard it last clear and hopefully we can move in that direction. All right, under business and operation, health and welfare contracts, fairly central school district to be resolved. Board of Education, on our recommendation, superintendent approves the two thousand seventeen eighteen health and welfare contract for two students that cost a one thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety cents per student for a total of two thousand three hundred seventy-seven dollars and eighty cents with this fairly central school district. It authorized with the board president and district clerk to execute this contract that presented to the board at this meeting. Have a motion please. Motion by Mike, second by Heather. Discussion. All of them favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So carry. Newburgh and Lawrence City School District to be resolved. Board of Education, on our recommendation, superintendent approves a two thousand seventeen eighteen health and welfare contract for one student that costs seven hundred eighty-three dollars and seventy-two cents per student for a total of seven hundred eighty-three dollars and seventy-two cents with the Newburgh and Lawrence City School District. And authorizes the board president, district clerk to execute this contract that presented to the board at this meeting. Have a motion please. Motion by Deb, second by Heather. Discussion. All of them favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So carry. Be resolved, Board of Education, on our recommendation, this budget transfer. Be resolved, Board of Education, on our recommendation, superintendent approves this following budget transfer for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year follows. Budget transfer number eight five one five for twelve thousand dollars, budget transfer number eight four two five for twenty-seven thousand dollars. And I have a motion please. Motion by Tom, second by Mike. Discussion. All of them favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So carry. Change order, Optimus Middle School General Construction, be resolved. Board of Education, on our recommendation, superintendent hereby approves Optimus Construction change order PH1B dash point three dash GC zero zero two as presented to the board at this meeting. Can I have a motion please?
Motion.
Second by Ed. Discussion. Uh, just a quick question, I might, I just went offline, but anyway. There was an, there's allowance on that change order sheet and we're not using all the allowance, but we're initiating a change order. Real reason behind that?
I've been pushing the architects to use the allowance first. What I've noticed, and I didn't ask specifically about that one, is if they're keeping some allowance, they have some idea what it's for. The middle school has a lot of work left to be done and, and I, I'm speculating, but I'm speculating that they expect that the allowance will be fully utilized. Because of course, we don't want the upcharge. But I can, I can ask if you, if you want us to table it, but I, I've asked that question all along.
Yeah, I'm just curious why they're not using that allowance and then go to change orders.
I suspect that they have the allowance already spent, it's just not reflected yet on there.
And I think that probably my sense is that the allowance will come back if it's not utilized.
Yeah, no, I don't like when that happens, I, I push them to do the opposite. So we, we've had conversation about that all along, but yeah, we should be using the allowance. I can, I mean, can, Sarah, can I just say this one, sorry?
But they have their own rationale behind that.
Well, usually they've got, they, they know that the allowance is gonna be spent, it just hasn't happened yet.
Only because I saw like a, a prior to this change order, a hundred and eleven thousand, I think a hundred and eleven thousand dollars in change orders plus sixty thousand dollars in allowance, that we only used about twenty-something thousand of it. And should I get it back up? Actually, a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in change orders. And sixty thousand of the allowance, only twenty-one was used. So I'm curious why we already paid a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars.
But, but if, but if the allowances don't get spent, isn't that money that we get to then pool and possibly redeploy?
Well, the, the difference is the allowance, we, we pay a premium on a change order. But what's happened, except for in one case that I made a big issue about it, is they tried to create a change order when the allowance hadn't been fully spent. I believe in this case, they are anticipating that allowance will be fully spent and they want to leave it because they know there's gonna be some found conditions. You know, this is the middle school and there's a lot of work left to be done there between the bathrooms and, and all of that.
And this change order work has been done already, has it not?
I'm sorry.
Quite a while ago.
Yes, saw metal studying there, I mean, we're framed up.
No, he's going back to what Louise is saying, is on a, use the allowance, the O and P and the bond is already included in the, in the base bid. And the change order, they're able to add, their percentage.
Results in a premium being added.
As the premium and the bonding on it, so. All right.
Didn't they say in here that, that you're using the contingency?
I, I have to look at, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it says the change order has a zero amount of the function.
That's right.
Utilized one sixty thousand contingency.
I did see that.
So, so this change, oh wait, let me, let me just respond. So this change order, if you look at the second page, it says zero dollar amount. It's just giving them the authorization to use the allowance.
For those.
So there's no dollar amount, but they're calling this a change order, Alan. And I'm okay with that because it creates a public record.
And that's the twenty.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I didn't get that.
That's the twenty-one eight three six.
Okay. So it's no new dollars added to the contract.
Right, I, my question, I guess maybe I can explain myself, why we, we use change orders first before we utilize all the allowance? Previously, the.
This architect, this architect uses the allowance and they refer to it as a change order. They call it a change order. To me, I always call it an allowance.
No, I don't allow it first.
Right, but so it creates a public record for it, but so that's why there's no dollars attached to it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
Um, motions by Mike, second by Ed. Any further discussion? All of them favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So carry. Donation of budget increase Highland Rotary Club, be resolved, Board of Education, on our recommendation, superintendent graciously accepts the donation of the, in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars from the Highland Rotary for the purpose of assisting in elimination of outstanding meal charges. Motion please, motion by Heather, second by.
This is unbelievable, yes. Thank you very much for the.
I think that is absolutely a wonderful thing to do. So how are you going to do that?
Right, so, well, I, I presented this to, and with the assistance of Mr. McCarthy, we presented this to the Highland Rotary Club. So they're donating fifteen hundred dollars and what we will do is, there'll be a committee at each building consisting of Mr. McCarthy and then a member of guidance and a member of the administration. And they will then review monthly on a case-by-case basis, the different charges that are there and will, you know, apply monies to, not all, it won't be just a blanket thing, it'll be on a case-by-case as we, you know, our counselors and social workers are well aware of many of the family situations. We will apply those monies to those accounts to get them even. And we're hoping that this will be an annual thing that Rotary will do for the district.
Is this, um, but the, the charges in arrears exceed this amount, or do you feel that some of it would?
Right now, we're, we're at about twenty-six hundred dollars across the board. But you're always gonna have a little bit where, you know, mom will send a hundred dollars tomorrow.
Right, right, not all of that may go unpaid.
We're gonna look like you said, on a case-by-case basis, so I'm just gonna wait.
Well, I think we should send up some husky here, how do we send a thank you?
I'll, I'll send a thank you to the.
You will, all right.
On behalf of the district, yes.
I'd like to say public good, Rotary, the Highland Rotary has been amazing. They, they supported the kids and interact, their commitment to Highland's education and Highland as a community as a whole, it's just absolutely wonderful.
Yeah, we call it the meal plan, money exclusively for accumulated lunches, M E A L.
We're the best at acronyms. What?
Okay, moving on, Highland Educational Foundation, be resolved. Board of Education, on our recommendation, superintendent graciously accepts the donation of four thousand dollars from the Highland Educational Foundation. Have a motion please. Motion by Mike, second by Ed. Discussion.
And this was, again, we had the grant teacher grants that were applied for. We had about twenty or more applications. We had a committee of people who picked those, so they're each getting a thousand dollars, there's four winners, that was Dan Schout. Schout at the high school here is gonna do a rock concert, so there'll be some professional musicians coming in training our band. And then they'll, our band will be forming with the, the musicians. The second one was Ella Sprayback here at the high school, she's been doing a micro greens garden. And then the third one is Brian Haas at the elementary, he'll be doing a, an outdoor garden. And then finally at the elementary also, Laura Hernandez, she'll be doing, getting a three-D printer and doing a lot of three-D printing work with the elementary students.
This is funny.
It's from the educational foundation.
Right, from probably Snowball?
Yeah, it's from the Snowball.
Great. Good job.
Okay, any other thank you, I don't, any other discussion?
I'll say thank you to the Highland Educational.
Not Beals and, uh, thank you. All of them favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So carry. Be resolved, Board of Education, on our recommendation, superintendent approves the budget increase of four thousand dollars presented to the board at this meeting. And motion please. Motion by Mike, second by Ed. Discussion. Tell him no good backs. All of them favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So carry. Surplus, vehicle bid result, be resolved, Board of Education, on our recommendation, superintendent accepts the following business presented to the board at this meeting. One Chevy, one two thousand three Chevy Suburban, eight hundred twenty-five dollars, one two thousand nine Ford twenty-eight twenty passenger van, one thousand five hundred and nine dollars, one two thousand one International twenty-nine nineteen van, eight hundred and nine dollars, one two thousand six Bluebird sixty-six passenger bus, three thousand three hundred fifty-nine dollars, and one two thousand six Ford wheelchair van, three hundred and one dollars and fifty cents. Can I have a motion please? Motion by Heather, second by Debbie. Discussion.
What is the bidding process in the, that's an awful strange number, three, three thousand three hundred fifty-nine dollars. Is it, is this a sealed bid?
It's a sealed bid, so there's a, an advertisement, we collect sealed bids and.
Where you came up with?
Yeah, like prices.
Like a little.
Prices.
Your manager remembered that dollar.
Yeah, I said, it is Price is Right, yeah.
It is Price is Right.
One dollar.
It's amazing, the competition we have of these, but.
Out of curiosity, Louise, do we get multiple bids each bus?
Oh, yeah, yeah, like four or five for each bus. I know, like.
Juan Torres knows how to, how to bid.
No, no stranger to that.
No, he's no stranger to that, right. Okay, all of them favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So carry. Sarah?
I don't know enough about, we had break, so just one thing, on March twenty-sixth, when we had the makeup snow day and we had teachers here for parent-teacher conferences, we also had the Highland Support Association members, the ten-month employees were here all day. And so Tom and I had a really good day with, with bus seventy-five, I can't count the seventy-five of our bus drivers. I don't think there was many food service, TAs, aides, custodians for various parts of the day. I don't, Tom, I coordinate, I don't know if he was gonna talk about it, but one of the high points, I think, of the day for people was Truver Better came and spoke again about the same presentation that he had done for each of the teaching staff about recognizing signs of, of drug abuse and kind of what to look for. So that was, people were very happy to have gotten that same training that everyone else had. I'll let Tom talk about it, you know, the other parts. So that was a very successful day, a good way to, to go off and break, I think, for them. Other than that, you know, moving forward, we're really starting to talk about our remaining two half-day, well, we have a half-day professional development day, April twentieth, and then we also have a full day, Super Ten's Conference Day, May eighteenth. So we're looking at our plans for those. Again, as I've been speaking about, we have new standards in almost every content area, so it'll be a lot of work with that across the board, as well as some technology integration with that. And then moving on to starting to talk about summer, what we'll be doing over the summer with teachers. And we're heading into busy, busy end of the year, consequently, these state assessments are coming as well, just to please encourage parents to encourage their students to take hours, use your way, state assessments. We're out there, we did send a letter home, right before break, going through some of the changes. I guess I could mention them right now as well, for parents who didn't get the letter, didn't know it. There are, since, since the Common Core test started about four years ago, the state has made changes to those tests. One of the biggest changes this year is that we are moving from a three-day test to a two-day test. So we reduce the amount of testing that needs to be done. Of course, as part of that, that means there are also less questions on each day. This is not new, something that's been in place for a couple of years. Students have as long as they need to take the test, it's not timed any longer. So, you know, the majority of our students finish them in the, in the kind of recommended time, but we do have a few students that are able to take their time and look through their questions so that they have some kind of testing anxiety or anything like that, they're, they're able to do it at their own pace. The tests have all been reviewed by New York State teachers, so they, they bring groups of teachers in. We, we sent one of our teachers this year to one of the review sessions and they go through and it was really interesting to hear the teacher talk about the process. You know, you're grouped with teachers of the same grade level, you do the questions and it, she indicated that she felt that people were really listening to the feedback that teachers were giving and so that questions that seemed like they were, they're above the level that they should be or were worded in a way that teachers thought students would understand, they took that into consideration. So, so these are all reviewed, they're not created by Pearson anymore, we're not doing Pearson tests, the new company is, uh, but is a different company that the state has contracted with for these tests. We are not doing computer-based testing for the regular assessments this year, but we will be, um, use, do computer-based testing for some of the, um, the, what's the term, for the tests, the, I'm gonna say practice tests, that's not the term I need to use, but in May, the students will be taking kind of test.
Field tests, yes.
Field tests, we are going to be doing computer-based testing. We know that we have math for those, so we're going to have the students, I think, I think we have third grade and either seventh or eighth grade who, who, students will be taking that on the computer so that we can start to look at what our functionality is and what our students' functionality is. Our one concern for students taking the math test is really making sure that they understand tools that are available to them through the computer-based program. Because there are a lot of things that you can use on there, such as equation builders to answer questions, as well as, you know, digital protractors, that kind of thing.
Is this part of the standardized test that you're talking about?
Yes, so the state will be going to computer-based testing for all of those tests at some point in the future. At one point, they had said it would be twenty nineteen, that's not, they're, they're, they're being pretty coy right now about when exactly that would be full implementation, but.
So that would be immediate results?
No.
No.
No, it doesn't mean that.
No.
It hopefully means that it's more immediate results, you know, that we don't have to wait quite as long. Right now, you know, they're still in the, the initial stages of it, so you'll get some of it, it, it'll come back sooner, but no, it's not, it's not immediate. And part of that is because they need to norm across the state and all kinds of things like that when they look at the scores.
You would think it, if it's computer-based.
You would think, yeah.
We'll get there.
Yeah, and what I do think in talking and working with Carol, is I do think that we are in good shape as far as devices go for our students to be able to take the computer based, so I want to see how the field testing goes right now, or this year, and then possibly go to doing some computer-based next year.
So the English is first, or the ELA is first, and that's this month?
ELA is first.
End of April.
Yep.
The end of April.
Yeah, about, we have about a week and then, yes, and then the math is about a week later.
Okay.
I guess I knew when those letters went home, there was definitely chatter up there.
I thought, I, I thought it was.
It was good healthy discussion, I think.
I thought it was a good communication.
Yeah, my district's doing the same thing, it's interesting because I, same thing, yeah, the chatter, it's good, see you next year.
Any other questions for Sarah?
Okay, Sue, you're up.
Yes, so I got a very nice call late afternoon today from Linda Calvo, and that's where I expect to be. New York State Association of People Transportation contacted us and that at their April twenty-sixth meeting, Christine Sorbello, uh, movie is invited. She's being honored as the runner-up for the bus driver of AP year.
Oh, yeah.
That's awesome, yes.
So that is, that'll be at the Ulster County Law Enforcement Center in Kingston, she's invited to bring her bus.
Having the district overload.
Yeah, so we have, we're gonna pack that bus and support her.
Who nominated her?
I'm not sure who nominated her, actually, yeah.
Is this county or state, or like?
This is the state.
Wow.
But she was one of the people certainly that I recognized, uh, when I met with the, uh, transportation, that she is an outstanding, uh, you know, driver, and, uh, you know, she fit in a lot of things that I talked about, uh, last Monday, about, you know, owning it, you know, she she owns it, you have to take ownership of what you, of your job, and, you know, that was one of my, uh, ten rules of to live by, the world according to Bon Jovi, and the first one was captain of the ship mentality, that you have to take ownership of what you do, and it doesn't, you don't have to be in charge of the whole district to be the captain of the ship, you're, you're the captain of your own ship, and actually, I specifically mentioned Christine Sorbello when I said that, but she is the captain of her ship, she, you know, her bus, she takes pride in it, um, and she's a great example of that, so. Uh, so, yeah, just to piggyback on what, um, so the Levick said, we, uh, we met all day with the, which, with HSA, we had a great turnout, um, one of the, you know, activities in the morning was talking about the district mission and vision, and and we did what I, what I've talked about with other groups, uh, same thing I did with the with the student council, I asked the support staff, so, you know, what are the things that we do here in Highland that you like, what are some things that we do that you don't like, and what are some things that we don't do at all, we should. So we had a great conversation from the staff about those things, so I will be, I'll be compiling them, I'll get the results out today. We had Truver Better, as, uh, as I mentioned, the afternoon, um, we did a little team building exercise, we actually did a scavenger hunt here in the high school, and, uh, you know, I I admit, full disclosure, I was a little nervous, I looked out at the different groups at the tables, I thought, oh, boy, uh, but everybody, uh, really got into it, um, you know, searching around this building for what's the highest locker number, how many chairs are in the auditorium, what's Mr. Zimmer's.
Which is a harder question than you would think.
It is, yeah. What's Mr. Zimmer's shoe size? To just getting everyday items, uh, a safety pin, uh, a wheat penny, a two dollar bill, those were some of the tougher ones that separated the winners, uh, from everyone else. And I did add you with the world according to Bon Jovi, and I'm gonna give you the, uh, the Reader's Digest version, and I can expand this someday, so these are, I talked about, uh, you know, the first thing, captain of the ship mentality, we already talked about that one, I told them about any job worth doing is worth doing right. So I was growing up, uh, on that, uh, philosophy from my father, the third, where there's no shortcuts, so there's no shortcuts in life, there's no shortcuts in your job, uh, you know, when you think of people who get themselves into, you know, trouble, it's very often because they took a shortcut. The fourth one was admit it, fix it, move on, so I try to live by that, so I I said everyone makes mistakes, um, sometimes makes the wrong decision, whether knowingly or not knowingly, but you have to admit it, you fix it, you move on, you don't harp on it, and I said, I'm not perfect, I, when I, when I do something incorrectly, I admit it, I fix it, and move on. Yes?
Sorry.
The fifth one was, uh, take what you did last time, make it better.
He's got it.
I said a lot to, uh, to many groups, so let's continue to take what you do, make it better, uh, next one, be a part of something bigger than yourself, so, you know, I talked a little bit about volunteerism. Seventh one, surround yourself with good people, uh, very important, you know, no one can do it alone, you have to surround yourself, you have to have good support, and I, and I do have that here in Highland. Number eight, uh, I talked about, uh, one of the things, uh, you know, Rudy Giuliani, one of his books after nine eleven, he he talked about different leadership philosophies, and one of them I really picked up on, and he said the real leadership is being able to recognize that a decision you made maybe wasn't the right one, and having the ability to do a one eighty when you're wrong. So if you roam all the time, that's not good, if you're, if you're every day doing one eighty, like I said, every once in a while, it actually shows leadership, if you say, you know what, that's a better idea, and you do a one eighty on a, on a decision, instead of just sticking to your guns and be stubborn about it. Uh, number nine was treat people with kindness, it goes a long way. And then number ten was, don't leave things in life unsaid. So you'll always regret that, so these weren't just kind of work things, they're just kind of life philosophies also, so that if you, and you wanna say something to someone, usually I mean something nice, uh, let them know how you feel. So that's, uh, that's what I have for tonight, uh, as, uh, we've talked about already with the budget, so we'll be, uh, finalizing that, we will have a budget to vote on at the mix of the April seventeenth meeting, also at that meeting, just two things to look forward to, we will have a, um, a short snippet of the play, they're gonna give a little production of the play, a little number, so I'm really looking forward to that. I know that my son, Mr. Myzilson, uh, played the same part, so, playing the same assignment.
He was telling me, he was very proud to hear that.
He's in the same part that my son was in that same play, it's a great play, very funny, very entertaining, uh, I also hope to have, if I can arrange it, I haven't seen the, we had a poster contest that the, uh, for opioid, to fight opioid abuse, and, you know, what makes you strong, the Highland Rotary Club sponsored, uh, three one hundred dollar prizes, so we just picked the winners, I showed those posters to the Rotary today, and I will hope, I will contact the students tomorrow, and invite them to the April seventeenth meeting, so we can present them with their hundred dollar checks, I thought that'd be nice to do right here publicly.
That's great.
Yes. Okay, that's it.
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, any questions?
No, I thought those points were, uh, were great, I mean, it's a presentation, but it sounded like a good.
Yeah, it was a PowerPoint, yeah, and I told stories on each one a little bit, yeah.
Okay, uh, Board of Education, new business school calendar for two thousand eighteen nineteen. I don't want to motion again. Beer results of Board of Education upon recommendations superintendent schools through the two thousand eighteen nineteen Highland Central School District Calendar presented to the board at this meeting. And a motion please, motion by Ed, second by Tom. Discussion?
So, if you, let me ratch out the calendar in front of you, so, some of the, you know, we looked at the calendar with, certainly with the administration, we review it with, uh, with HSA, HTA, and then, you know, so we, uh, collaborated and made some changes, and we think for the better. We took some, you'll see, I'll I'll go through each one, and we took, we spread out the superintendent conference day a little bit more evenly, um, in the past, I know there was reasons for it, but the, the late May conference didn't make sense to me, that's too late in the year, especially at the secondary level, they're reviewing for Regents exams, and, you know, teachers never liked it, we, in any way, last time. So, uh, September, just like we've done in the past, we'll have the two superintendent conference days, uh, that gives us time, so we're gonna go over, so a lot of the legalese, we do a lot of the kindergarten work on those days, we have orientation, uh, so the first day of students, we do the sixth, uh, we have the, we'll have the one, well, Yankapour on nineteenth in October, certainly have Columbus Day. Then a half day that was, uh, worked out very nicely in previous lives that I've had, is a half, uh, day for staff development on, on the thirty first. Like, the thirty first very often ends up being a, one of those days that a lot of work doesn't get done, because there's just so much excitement, um, so that would be, I thought, was a good day to, because what we're trying to do, what I would like to like to see is you spread out as evenly as possible your development day, so really, almost every month, you have something, so you continue your staff development on a more consistent basis. In November, uh, it does happen to fall that the, uh, the observance of Veterans Day is on a weekend, so that is a long weekend there, Monday, the twelfth. And then again, this is a little different, uh, there would be half day conference, uh, for students on the nineteenth and twentieth, okay, and then there'll be parent teacher conferences in the afternoon, and then Wednesday, the twenty first, would be a total day off, this district would be closed. It's a nice way to kind of, it's the two day, half days, the, um, elementary teachers would, uh, make sure that they see all of their parents as they do every year, um, but then it gives you a nice day off, so, you know, in the past, people have come in on that Wednesday. December, again, a half day staff development on the seventh, and then the regular, uh, winter holiday break starts the twenty fourth, and it goes to January first. January, I wonder, King Day, you have Regents Week, and again, that's another good time to do a full conference day, so that's the twenty eighth, so you have Regents Week, that Monday, the twenty eighth, is usually the first day of the third marking period, they'll, they'll start first with the Super Tents Conference Day. February, you would have a, again, we've traditionally done conference days on the President's Weekend Friday, but that would be a full day on that conference day, the fifteenth, instead of a half day, so we ended with the same number of full days, it's just, just spread out differently. In March, uh, you have, uh, we took the, we have a half day, that's the half day, traditional half day parent conference day, uh, but then we took the one that was in May, and we put it at the end of March, so that your, your last days of, uh, conference days were in March, not in May, because again, May is kind of, certainly, we're gonna make very good use of it this year, but I just think it's better utilized, uh, spread out this way. The spring holiday, and it's kind of set by, you know, by the county, uh, in May, you do have, uh, again, just Memorial Day, and in June, you can see the last day of school is the twenty fifth, the raining day is the twenty sixth, and then we would have graduation, I presume, on the twenty seventh. That does give us one eighty four days, it gives us seven snow days, so we have seven snow days this year, we had six, so it gives us an additional snow day, just to give us a little bit more leeway, as you know, they could, you know, teachers get the days back, so, you know, there are, you know, the days where, there's still days where they would come out, but I think seven, you know, with the kind of crazy weather we've been having the past couple of years, I think that gives you a little bit more, uh, room to breathe. So just filling up with the same numbers, full days, uh, spreads out the conference days, uh, a little more evenly, that'd be more education sound to do it that way.
I know, I probably will be asked this question, a lot of school districts take that day, uh, the spring break, the day after, Monday after Easter, is there any reason why we can't do that?
So we initially had that, but then you'd only have six snow days. So that would be.
So that would be your gift back.
That would be, so we would hope, so, you see, Easter's a little, spring holidays a little later, this was the early one, we don't like the early one, so hopefully, theoretically, by that spring break, we're out of the danger of getting snow, so if we had extra days to give back, we would put one back on that Easter Monday.
It was another one where, where, uh, the may.
Or the May, the the Memorial Day weekend, yeah, because you know, you know, we've had, we had years where you had to give back like five days, and we have, and we have, we did too. You had very long.
It was a vast May.
It was a vast May, yes.
What was the raining day?
So the raining day, that's the day to raid the Regents Day.
And for elementary teachers to wrap everything.
To wrap everything up.
Raining days and.
That's what that means.
And, and, uh, elementary teachers are doing their core cards and everything, yeah, so the last day for students is the twenty fifth.
Right. Alright, anybody have any question?
Do we got a motion?
Motion. Oh, and Tom.
Yeah, yeah, you want it again.
Are we? Very much on board with the other non-District.
Oh, yeah, no, we're, you're always pretty much, you know, on board, you're, you know, you're, there's, everyone's a little different, because there's different traditions at each school, but, you know, we reviewed this together with the superintendents, and we're, and you're pretty much on board, uh, in line.
You're, you're always.
The one ninety one, the contractual day, so I mean, isn't that, isn't that, uh, for, to other, like, do you remember what your, your contractual days were at your former district?
Uh, one eighty eight.
All of those in favor?
All of them, all of them in favor?
Aye.
Pose, so carry. Police Administration Budget Vote, Board Member Election, uh, the budget, Police Administration Budget Vote, Board Member Election must take place Wednesday, April eighteenth, and I believe, is that are gonna be our board meeting night, no?
No, we are the seventeenth, we have in the.
So we're gonna need a forum to come in on the eighteenth to take the vote, normally we've done that in the past, where we get board members.
So we could, uh, what the time, like, if you want to discuss it as it gets closer, but.
Yeah, as we get close, maybe we can discuss, we could have a, you know, eight AM meeting right in my office, or.
Yeah.
Okay.
One year we did it in middle school, so we could.
Yeah, whatever, whatever works.
Yeah, whatever you'd like.
Yeah.
Yep.
I unfortunately will not be around that day, I'll be traveling.
Okay, uh, Tulsa County School Awards Association Distinguished Friends of Education Awards Dinner, I think everybody got an email, uh, if you're looking to attend, we can, um, put a table together, uh, I'm not sure.
I'm, I'm.
Administration, so we'll have a board administrator table.
Seven.
Your, uh, spouse or better hands are invited, you know, make an additional forty, forty two dollars, or whatever.
I'll talk to Lenny, I can look like Elsa.
I don't think I got that email, although I'm still haven't gone through all my emails, but I'll have to pay, but I would like to go, so if you're, if you're RSVPing or however it works.
Yeah, there's still some time, so, um, I will, actually, I'll send out another email as it gets closer, because we didn't choose it Sunday.
Is it May twenty fourth, you said?
That one is.
Thursday, twenty.
Fourth, okay, it is.
Fourth, right, then there is another meeting that's this Monday.
Right.
That you will also receive the email.
Oh, that was the one with the dinner.
Right, so I received Sue's response and Tom's response, for Monday's meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so just let Lisa know if you're going to attend the, uh, Friends of Education Awards Dinner, uh, I think it's, did they say May eleventh as a cutoff, or is there some dates in there for?
Yeah, we, it was.
May eleventh.
They'll open it up to, to more people, yeah.
Yeah, I think they're. Right.
Alright, uh, under old business, our Board of Education policy number seven six four one, check and reading. Oh, anyone have any issues with that?
Right, there were.
I tell this. Any issues with that policy, it wasn't met, it was just.
There's no changes, right?
There's no changes that.
No changes, okay. No changes. So everyone's good with that?
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll go to accept that the policy can have a motion, please. Motion by Sue and Tom. Any discussion, all good? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, so carry, we'll do the policy seven six four one, forward. Great, anything really good and welfare of the district?
Um, I just had a comment on if we're, I, like, I love the student of the month, I felt it was a little tight in this space, would we consider moving into the cap, that was all I was, and if we're having other honorariums, but if everybody felt it was fine, that's, that's good too, I was just thinking about.
I was looking at that for the next meeting, just for the, if the play.
Just something to think about.
We're probably gonna leave the cap for the play anyway, so I think that's a good, maybe.
So four seventeen will go in the cafeteria?
Just to think about, maybe, maybe the student of the month works, because they tend to gather a lot of people.
They bring people with the poster awards.
Student poster.
Yes, it is.
That's what we wanted.
It is.
You know what's in the streets.
Um.
Okay.
Alright, anything else?
And, and.
No, that, yes, we'll, we'll cap for that meeting.
Yeah.
Or next meeting will be?
Well, actually, the next two meetings will be, because the following meeting, May, already, will be the public hearing meeting, which we always hold in the cafeteria, and that's for.
We always go there.
Not that anybody shows up, but you know.
I know, but we will.
Big event, big walk for the students.
Just in case.
Just in case.
And then, uh, the May fifteenth meeting is the actual voting vote.
Right. Wow.
Right.
Yeah, not that far.
I know.
It's going way too fast.
I know.
Great, uh, we have a motion to George, George to go into executive session for personnel issues, motion by Mike, second by. No, no.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Second by...
Mike and Heather. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, so carry. Can't say goodnight to everyone.
Good night, Dean.
Good night, Dean.
Good night, Dean, thanks for staying.
Good night, Dean, you're setting the bar too high.